I'll call the July 1st, folks, July 1st, 2020, meeting to order. This is a Zoom meeting, starting at 7:30 on July 1st. Are there any additional agenda consent items? And if not, if there is, so we'll move on to delegations. There are members of our community here, most of them are attached to commissions and boards and stuff, but anybody who'd like to speak, raise your hand or send me a quick chat or or something. I'm assuming you can all unmute yourself. These always get a little tricky here. But if you wish to, I think if you're on the phone, you hit star six if that happens, but most people are on computers tonight, with the exception of Mrs. Hardy. Mr. Dagel is not in attendance tonight. He's on vacation. Gave me warning they wouldn't be able to make this one. And he's worked hard over the Public Safety Building Committee, the Vision Committee, but also at work with all that they're doing over there at Electric Boat. So nobody from the public, nobody from the public, nobody from the public for delegations. We'll move on then. Approval of the minutes, regular meeting of June 17th, 2020.
This is Kevin Serry. I move to approve the regular meeting minutes of June 17th, 2020 as submitted.
Second.
With motion seconded. Are there any comments or corrections?
It was seconded by Mark Salerno as well.
Mark Salerno seconded. Thank you for that. All of, no corrections, comments, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay. We have it at five zero. Consent calendar, Kevin?
Kevin Serry, again, and I'll move to approve the consent calendar for the meeting of July 1st, 2020, the amount of $197.34.
Second.
Mrs. Hardy has seconded it. Thank you. Any comments, corrections, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Are there any abstentions? Then that vote will go down as a five zero vote. And when I say that, if I'm wrong, you correct me right away, okay? If I didn't hear a negative vote or an abstention. That's why I do that, for the record. Okay, we'll go on to 6A, which is the bonding of the public safety building. We did this in two stages last week, last meeting. We approved the public safety building, say unanimously, but even a strong unanimous vote. And we then now have to have a resolution that pass forward to the Board of Finance because should they approve, refer to like as a bonding resolution attached to this. So if it's okay with everyone, we can add it to, we can call for a resolution in a second. And if there's any questions about the item, we can then ask. So Kevin, do you want to put it?
Yeah, this Kevin Serry resolved that the resolution entitled "Resolution Amending a Resolution Making an Appropriation in the Amount of $5 Million for the Planning, Design, Acquisition, Construction, Equipping, and Furnishing of a Public Safety Building and Authorizing the Issuance of $5 Million Bonds of the Town to Meet Said Appropriation Impending the Issuance thereof, the Making of Temporary Borrowings for such Purpose, a copy of which is attached hereto is hereby adopted and recommended for approval by the Board of Finance and the Legal Voters of the town at a special town meeting. We waive reading the resolution in its entirety. A copy of, a copy has been and will continue to be available for inspection in the town clerk's office."
Second.
Second.
Mark, you're muted.
Good, I didn't want you to hear that anyway.
Well, it was nice not listening to you, you were muted.
That's what Sandy says. So if you remember, we had to read the whole resolution last time. We begged and pleaded with the bond council and went back to prior bond resolutions and we had set a precedent. And we do have this on file, will also be on the town website. If anyone wishes to read through all the legalese, as you know, it was, we had three or four of them at the last meeting. And then we had to go on to the Board of Finance, we had to revalise as well. It makes, it makes for a very dull meeting, and I'm not sure anyone's listening by the, by the end of the first one, never mind the fourth one. Bond resolution, bond lawyers agreed. And so we have this on record. The, the resolution motion is on the table. It's been seconded by Mr. Salerno. Are there any questions?
Mark?
Yes.
I just want to point out that we're reading, like, the title of the resolution as, and not really any of the body of it. And it's actually in the body that it specifies that we are amending the resolution by 2.2 million.
Right, to 7.2.
In the title, it just references the $5 million which it was originally adopted for.
Thank you. That's a good point, and thank you for bringing that up. So the original resolution from two years ago mentioned $5 million, so this resolution is $5 million. And then it goes into the resolution itself, which men's, which mentions and amends, that's the word I was looking for, the, the resolution to go to 7.2 million, which is the, the upgraded costs for the upgrade to the public safety building and all that's going in there. So thank you for pointing that out. If there are no other questions or comments, we'll call the motion. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstain? Terrific. We'll move on to 7A, which is the carryover for Board of Ed sped account of $47,008.95. We're, you know, we're at the end of it. By the way, this is our new year, July, for happy new year. And I don't think I said that to you, being the finance director and this being our fiscal, beginning of our fiscal year, this is our new year. This is when we close out everything and, and some of these things we carry over, and we ask you to carry them over because of very, very specific spends and needs. And this is one of them. Anna, do you want to give us just a little bit of detail on this? Are you, are you up to speed? We, the Board of Ed asked if they need to come. We said we could, we could handle it. Yeah, if you could maybe give an update, we all have it in our back.
Yeah, so if you recall, there was an ongoing litigation. We had previously committed some funds in fund balance. And it's still, while a judgment has been awarded, there's some technicalities as to why the town has not been required to pay out. So that the Board of Ed had put aside some funds in this year's budget, the $47,008.95, so that we would have the full amount that we needed in order to make this payment. However, the payment again is being delayed. So that's why we're coming to you to ask to allocate this amount of funding to the committed fund balance.
Very simple, and you know, this is an ongoing litigation matter, and we know, we know we're going to need this money, and it had been set aside, so we'd like to push it forward since it's not time yet for us to kind of check.
Kevin Serry, I'll move, make the motion. I'll move to commit $47,089.5 remaining from the Board of Education 2019, 2020 budget to fund balance account 01-300-01-001, fund balance assigned specifically for the payment of the judgment in impending litigation matter. Once it is finalized, and we are ordered to issue payment by the court and forward to the Board of Finance for approval.
Second, this is Mark Salerno.
Motion and seconded. Further comments? Questions? All in favor say aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Are there any abstentions? Okay, so I'll, I'll call that, that vote is a five zero. And, and thank you all for that. We'll move to 7B. We do have, let's see, Sergeant Maisick is here. You folks, this is about carrying over some money on the, in the police account. Remember, remember back in January, that seems like, well, we were living in a different world then, weren't we? In January, first of all, during this last year, last 12 months, we lost both of our K-9 officers, K-9 dogs that work in the police department, both in the same year. And you remember that, and we talked about that, and we remember, we remember that we were going to go out and place them, one with donations and one through special funding. And what we did is we transferred some money from our contingency account over to the police to get one of the dogs right away. And then COVID happened, and, you know, nobody's training dogs, and we couldn't put an officer out in a training facility for a while. So obviously, we pushed the pause button on that. And I think what Mike Maisick is going to talk about tonight is, or his request is, and the department's request is to, to take the money we put aside and move it over to the next fiscal year, which is now this fiscal year, July 1st, 2020, for us to go out and get that dog when it's appropriated in time. How did I do, Mr. Sergeant Maisick?
Perfect. That's exactly what we're looking for, again, because of the pandemic coming up and, you know, the loss of the two dogs and the timing. So that just looking to carry that, you know, that half over to this current fiscal year where we can offset the other half and start once we, you know, get close enough here to start looking at purchasing the animal.
Right, right. Make your approval before, what we want to do is carry that over so we can fulfill that, that promise to you.
Okay, Kevin Serry, I'll move to approve the carryover of $4,250 from Police K-9 account 01-70-725-720-501, from the 2019, 2020 fiscal year to the 2020, 2021 fiscal year and forward to the Board of Finance for approval.
Second.
Second.
I think I heard Mark Salerno.
I think Dan, Dan beat me.
Dan, Dan, okay, great.
I might have.
Mr. Cunningham, all right. It depends on your web speed and your bandwidth, I guess, sometimes. Thank you, thank you, we have a motion, we have a second. Are there any questions on this? I, I would start with a question of Sergeant Maisick, when do you think, I mean, we're still in the middle of this, and God knows what's going to happen, but, but assume, assuming we continue to walk out of this pandemic, when, when might we get one of the Canines into our force?
So what we're looking at right now is obviously, we just had Sergeant Terry Safiati had retired. So we're looking at doing a sergeant promotion. We're in the process of hiring three more officers right now, so we're, we're doing their backgrounds. The next thing is going to have to be a promotion to sergeant to fill Sergeant Safiati's spot. And then the K-9 portion, so what's occurring is we have officers right now who are in both runnings. So one of them is in the sergeant running and, but is also interested in doing the K-9, and by way of how the department operates, you can't do both. So you can't take the sergeant position plus also take the K-9, because that would be two spots for one person. So once we get these three new officers hired, get the, get that looked at, we're going to then basically do the sergeant and the new K-9 process together. So I would say that should be done by next month, and I, within, hopefully, the next two to three months, we would look at maybe doing a purchase, going out and looking at the kennels that do offer the animals.
Giving a fourth quarter then, perhaps. And again, that all, you know, we could be hitting the, the pause button again. All sorts of things could happen. We won't hold you to that date, but we do know, you know, the goal is to get this done as soon as possible, that, that's.
Absolutely, yeah, with every, everything, you know, depending on how this works out with the general.
That's busy for me, and that's busy for you too. While you mention Sergeant Safiati, and I was going to talk about that in the first selectmen's report, but while I have you, and so that you can leave, not stick around the whole meeting, Mike, how long was Sergeant Safiati with our force? Was it 39 years?
Thirty, yeah, thirty-eight and a half years.
It's on his 39th year.
Yes.
With, with our force, and he spent some time somewhere else before that, but that's amazing.
Absolutely, yeah. So between, he started over an old line, came here part-time, and then was taken on as a full-time officer, yes.
Right. And he retired this week, is he no longer?
Today, July 1st is his last day. He's done.
Right. Very difficult during these times when you have someone like that, who, you know, we'd want to celebrate that great career with him, maybe with his family, and give him honor at our, at the selectmen's meeting, and, and can't. And give him our best when, when you see him. And I was fortunate enough to, to walk into a human resource meeting without knocking. Just walked into a room, and there he was, and I was able to say goodbye to him. And that's my point, is he had a very long distinguished career with our force, and, you know, he'd seen a lot. And, and, you know, we build our, our teams, whether it's a town hall team or especially a police force, on the, on the backs of the people who came before us. And, and he certainly was a lot of our foundation. So Terry Safiati will be missed, and thank you for filling the blanks, Mike.
Yes.
So we have a motion on the table, and we can talk about Sergeant Safiati. We all like to jump in on that during the first selectmen's report. Motion on the table, it's been seconded. Any other questions? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Are there any abstentions? It carries unanimously, five zero zero. And thank you, thank you Sergeant Maisick for jumping in tonight. I think you're, I think you're done on our agenda, right?
Yes.
Go back to watching Jeopardy or whatever you do. All right, thank you. A bonding fire apparatus is next on our agenda. This is Chief Ricks, I know you're here. I, I, I'm going to assume you're going to unmute yourself. Shoot, I just muted you as you, oh, there you go.
Yep. If anybody has any questions, be happy to answer.
Great. So while we went a little bit of a presentation here, you know, let us know what, what's going on. First of all, because, you know, Chief, you're a volunteer chief, you're in the Flanders Department, you have represented Flanders Department for a whole long time, as did your dad. What's the situation with the pumper? Why are we replacing one right now?
So just to start, the age of it is about 25 to, just shy of 26 years. Most recently, it has, the radiator needs to be replaced, and it's a custom, custom-built piece that the town mechanic looked at and said something he can't just order and replace, it has to be completely remade and installed and.
Yeah, I heard it again. See, if you went, you went mute on us again.
How about now?
Yeah, you're good.
Okay, so it has a radiator problem that needs to be custom-built replaced. It has a lot of electrical issues that have started to happen. And then on top of that, the fuel tank has a split in it, and every time it rains or the water comes out from the top of the overfill of the water tank, it seeps into the tank and gets into the fuel, which causes bigger problems. And the estimate, I don't have the paperwork in front of me, was around 25,000, almost 26,000 to replace, to do all of those repairs. And the actual cost of the engine now, I believe, was like 15,000 to 17,000 for what it's worth. So it was by far more than the, the worth of the vehicle.
These trucks typically take 20, have a useful life of about 20 years or so. They don't put a lot of miles on them, but they put a lot of engine wear on.
Yeah, it's, it's the hours that add up most on it. NFPA says fire engines should be replaced every 20 years, ladder trucks every 25. We've definitely gotten our, our worth out of it. It, it's worked great in the past, and if I, if it was worth fixing, I would, I would keep it, but it's, I don't know what else is going to happen next, and it, it is what it is at this point.
No, you took it out of service, if, if memory serves me right.
Yep, it's 100% out of service right now because of the repairs that need to be done. It can't be, I can't stay running to, to take in emergencies. The last fire that it actually pumped was Guy's Oil, and it ran for the entire time. And at the very end, it actually died after the fire was out. And it was quite embarrassing to have to go up to the owner, Dick Gata, and ask him for help to restart a fire engine after he just lost half of his business.
And of course he did, because that's the kind of guy Dick Gata is.
Absolutely, he got it right up and running, and we got it, we were able to get it back and then get it looked at.
Yeah, so in the meantime, you have been able to, to our supplier, secure a loner vehicle, because it's, again, you still have, you have to run a fire department, and, and of course, an engine. So in the meantime, we took that out of service, you needed something, so your supplier was able to give you a loner, so the men and women that, that work at our department would be safe and would have a dependable piece of equipment, am I right?
Yep. New England Fire Equipment, who has the contract for all of our, our pump testing and maintenance and the warranties for the other apparatus that we have purchased for, had given us a rental, basically, that we were paying $100 a month for, which he actually gets a lot more, but because we're a really good customer, he left that 100. And I believe he's going to waive the whole thing down the road if we do purchase from him.
Terrific, terrific. Are there other questions in the Board of Selectmen?
Just a quick one, Chief. Can, can you give us the status of all the trucks? We've purchased some in the past. What's, what's the oldest one after this?
This is the oldest one.
And what was the next oldest?
The next oldest is going to be the rescue truck, which was 2008, I believe.
Okay, so we have, we have a while before we're going to need.
Yeah, the, the problem was, we had a, the town, we had a plan with the town with capital non-reoccurring to replace these items as they came due to the age requirements through NFPA. And what was happening was so much money was being put into the CNRE, and then it was taken out for other stuff when it was supposed to be earmarked for a fire apparatus. And when it came time to purchase, it got pushed off, pushed off. And that's why we, we ended up buying the ladder truck and our last fire engine only a year or so apart, because we kept pushing off the replacement dates.
Yeah, yeah.
So this was, this one was actually supposed to be replaced five years ago.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we used to save up and buy the trucks, and, you know, the police have that luxury now because they have a, a second source of income, of revenue through their, you know, rental of their vehicles, during outside jobs, making 25 bucks an hour, and they're, they're kitting that, putting that into a kitty, and then they're buying their fire, they're, they're buying their police cars without any tax payment or investment. That's wonderful. We've been able to transition to that over the last couple of years. Fire obviously doesn't have that luxury. We used to, like I say, we used to put money away into a CNRE, but that's the first place you'd go when you're trying to cut a budget, frankly. And you've seen it over the years, if you've been on this board. Other questions about the fire apparatus? Bill, Bill, you went out and got three bids, I assume, or?
Yep, we put it on the town website, and we only actually got one bid that came back.
Okay.
I'll move, this Kevin Serry, I'll move the following resolution, resolve that the resolution entitled "Resolution Making of an Appropriation in the Amount of $635,000 for the Acquisition of a Fire Pumper and Authorizing the Issuance of $635,000 Bonds of the Town to Meet Said Appropriation Impending the Issuance thereof, the Making of Temporary Borrowing for such Purpose, a copy of which is attached hereto is hereby adopted and recommended for approval by the Board of Finance and the Legal Voters of the Town at a special town meeting. We waive the resolution in its entirety, a copy of has been and will continue to be available for inspection in the town clerk's office.
And on our website. We will post it on our website in our minutes.
You have to ask for a second, Mark.
Well, or, or someone will just volunteer a second for that.
I'll second.
Mr. Cunningham seconds the resolution.
Mark, a question, a question for you, is it says town meeting. Do we have to do a town meeting on this? Because the resolution says town meeting.
Dana, what's, what's the deal with, are we doing a town meeting?
So.
You decided to do one.
What, what, the way it works is, when you think about, the, the town meeting and the referendum is considered a town, the town meeting, because every time we have a referendum, we have a town meeting, and the town meeting is adjourned to a referendum.
So this is the fire truck we're talking about, not the public safety building?
Right, but the, the issue here is the fact that we have on, you know, we're dealing with multiple items on an agenda that would typically require a town meeting. And so, you know, you, you just can't pick and choose, like, oh, okay, this one should have a town meeting, but we're not going to have a town meeting on this, and then have a town meeting on another item. So because they're all on the same meet, you know, the same agenda, there will be a town meeting for the apparatus.
So we are going to have a town meeting. That was my question, is we're going to have a Zoom town meeting, presumably, we're going to try to get away, not get away, but try to make that work, inviting the public into a town meeting and have a town meeting that way. Gene Cushman will run a town meeting through Zoom on all these items, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Great. Good question, Kevin. We were struggling with that, you know, this is a fire safety, public safety thing, and so there's, there is a provision that you could forego that, but why not? We can have a town meeting by Zoom just as easily, so we'll do that. Any other questions? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstain? Next on our agenda is 7D. Am I right, or do we go to this notice of referendum?
No, special appropriation.
Yeah, the special appropriation revale of 272,400 is 7D. So Anna will fill in the blanks here. We are, as you know, we are required to have a total revale this year. We've, once again, gone out and solicited bids, and we, we, we received bids, and we are going with, I believe it's Vision, once again, they're very good at what they do. They've done our revale in the past. I believe, do we, Dana, did we do this with Watford again this year?
Yes, the, we.
Joint bid package?
Yes.
Yeah, so we did downgrade the level of inspections that would typically be required. So instead of 100% of the homes being entered and reevaluated, we will do 40%. The law allows that, allows, allows, over the course of 10 years, all the properties need to be seen. And it's the expert advice of our town assessor that they go out on inspections all the time, and there's, you know, building plans, and people rehab their houses, et cetera. So we're out and about all the time, and that counts. So, and we upgrade the, the assessment when we're up and out in the public. So this, this works, it matches, it, it is a price of $272. We estimate we saved about $100,000 for the Eastside taxpayers by doing it this way. And we have the confidence, the full confidence of the town assessor, that we will have a very solid assessment of the town, and we will meet all the qualifications necessary. Anna, is there anything to add to that?
You've covered it very nicely.
Thank you.
Okay, dual motions here. I'll make the first one, this Kevin Serry. I'll move to award the 2021 state mandated property revaluations to Vision Government Solutions as per the tax assessor's recommendation, and authorize the first selectmen to execute any and all necessary documents.
Mark Salerno, second.
Mark Salerno, second. Any further comments? Vision has done a fantastic job over the last several revales, and have fun to meet them and know, know their work very well. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Are there any abstentions? I'll note that Mrs. Hardy has fallen off again, should be believed, and we'll watch for her to come back on. That was a four zero zero vote.
And I'll also make a second motion. I'll move to approve a special appropriation in the amount of $272,400 in CNRE account 32-01-102-500-001, revaluation project to perform the 2021 revaluation and forward to the Board of Finance. revaluation project to perform the 2021 revaluation and forward to the Board of Finance for approval.
Second.
Mr. Salerno seconded. Any comments? Questions? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? And any abstained? And Mrs. Hardy, I think you needed you. And you had a motion. It's the 7D motion. I think there's two of them, right? And it's a motion to, first of all, we awarded Vision, the Vision Company to do our revale. But this was to appropriate $272,400 $272,400 for the revale. And we just had a motion, it was seconded, and we all voted. Would you like to vote?
I did.
Well, we didn't hear you.
Okay, yes.
You were coming back on. I think you were still muted when you were coming back on. I am.
Oh, okay. I, I also, but I do want to caution about the photos and photos being posted online. I expressed this concern the last time we went for revale that pictures that show the interior of homes, that those be limited and not put on online sites for security purposes.
Thank you for that comment. I'll pass that along to Diane and whatever possible, if that is possible. I think it is. I think we generally post outside pictures, but that's a good point. So thank you for that. And I'll pass it along to Diane. Yeah, in this day and age, it's scary. Everyone has access to everything. Next on our agenda is 7E, carryover, the retirement liability account balance of $93,355. Anna, do you want to carry us through on this one?
Sure. So back a couple fiscal years ago, we established a budget account, retirement liability, because we, we have started to notice an uptick in people retiring. We do have an aging, we, an aging workforce within the town. We haven't done the full calculation for this fiscal year that just ended, but at 6:30, 19, that liability is over $1.1 million. So if we, you can see where, you know, it's, it's kind of a wise move for, for us to go ahead and do that. So at the end of each year, we've been carrying over the prior year balance just to help it, you know, be a little bit more robust. I believe in the 2021 budget, we had $125,000 in, you know, in the budget. So it's, it's just, you know, a good metaphor. It would be great if when we're working on building the budget for the subsequent year, employees would let us know when they plan to retire in the upcoming fiscal year, because then we would be in a position to really budget accurately for it. But it just doesn't happen that way.
So thank you for that insight. And by now, you, you're all veterans. You know what we're doing on this. There's a huge unfunded liability that, you know, we don't want to, we take care of the pension and we're well funded in our pension, properly funded. But this unfunded liability, when someone leaves, if they've accumulated lots of PTO time, et cetera, we, we have to pay them out generally. And often we get a good indication. Our department heads have good relationships with their team. We know generally when people are leaving, but sometimes it's sudden and sometimes we have to downside suddenly too. And when we do that, we still have to pay them. So this has really helped us in years past before we started this little fund, this liability account balance. We, we would scramble. We'd be scraping money from different accounts to try to pay, to meet our obligations. So this has been very helpful. And again, at the end of the year, we have money left over. We just roll it back over. So.
Okay, this is Kevin Serry. I'll move to approve the carryover of the remaining balance of $93,355 in account 01-01-114-100-128, retirement liability from the 2019-2020 budget to the 2020-2021 fiscal year and forward to the Board of Finance for their approval.
Second.
Motion and seconded, I heard Roseanne second that, if that's what you have Sandy. Any other comments on this? All in favor, say aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Are there any abstentions? Terrific. And the ayes have it. I don't have, I can vote on this. I don't have a liability. When I leave office, I will not get a payout because I'm an elected official, although an employee. Ex officio reports.
Kevin Serry, I have nothing. We haven't met at all from Parks and Rec, although they are doing well with the temporary, or the the day non-resident passes have pretty much been selling out every day. So that's been going well. That's it.
Thank you, Kevin. Mr. Cunningham?
I did attend the Brookside Farm meeting. It was the first one they've had since, I believe, January. So there was some catching up to do, but they did have a barn rental on June 28th. So hopefully that went off well for them. Hopefully they made a few dollars on that to help.
Good.
That's, that's about it.
Mrs. Hardy?
Okay, yes. The Commission on Aging has been kept up to speed with Ms. Rosewood sending out frequent emails informing them of any issues or concerns. And that seems to have gone very well. They are not currently, of course, offering any in-house programs, but they continue to do outreach and for people that are shut-ins, they are seen on a regular basis for the Meals on Wheels program and other needs that might be necessary. And that's, that's the only ex officio I have this evening.
She's doing an amazing job. Kathy is with her team. They're pushing out Meals on Wheels, as obviously they're open. They don't expect to be, that might be the last thing that we open up in town. Just, you know, obviously the clientele is vulnerable and we want to make sure everyone's safe. The building will open up soon. The library is scheduled to open up July 6th. By the way, I hope I'm not stealing someone's thunder. I think, anyway, July 6th, that's Monday. That's, that's in four or five days. We're going to open up the library and the Parks and Rec. So if you need to buy a beach pass, if you're this late in the season, you haven't bought one, you still need to, you can walk into the building. The registrars will be there during normal work hours as well as we get closer to election season. So we are opening that building. The senior center will not be open. We'll keep those doors locked and, and the programming down. Parks and Rec programming will kick in, I believe, in July. They're going to start using their rooms again for some of the things that they do in the evening and during the day. So, so be mindful of that. Check in with them, check in online. And of course, the library, you know, they're spreading people out and so much work is going in into opening up things. And hopefully we can keep things open, unlike other places in the country that are now shutting things down again. So we are asking that patrons wear masks in all town buildings. We're asking our staff to wear masks as well in our, in our facilities and counters, any place where the public meets staff. We have, when I, the plastic shields, I call them sneeze, sneeze shields, but they're all over in every department, at every counter. You'll, you'll find these things and also an abundant supply of extra masks if you don't have one or if, if you're just starting to get a little stinky and you need a replacement, we have some masks to give out as well. Through the Castle of Government, we went out and we were able to purchase masks at a very discounted price. So we would have some available because we know this is going to linger and continue. I, I went off on a little bit. Let's, let's go back and make sure everyone else is covered. Mr. Salerno?
Just real quick, Planning has its first meeting since March next week. They have a few items on their agenda. They had a POCD meeting, which I did not attend earlier this week. I guess there was some confusion that we, there was understanding that the governor gave a 90-day extension to the POCD, but now it turns out they didn't. So Mark, if you have any pull with the governor, it would be good to get an extension on that. They could certainly use it.
He's taking a call every day.
Yeah. And Building had a meeting and they just talked about some, just paying some final bills and some, some final altercations for the schools. So that's all I have.
Yeah, there's some good news with the schools coming up that they, they think they're going to be able to open. The governor's coming up with a plan on that. More to, more to come. You know, there's all sorts of restrictions with that. So the schools are going to be busy all summer trying to work out the details so we can get back to a classroom. And again, hopefully the trends, that's most important, is the trends continue in the right direction. I'll, I'll tidy up on a few things where we mentioned Sergeant Safiati prior. And I know you've, you've all met him and, and know what a good man he was and, and is a good man, but no longer an Eastline Police Officer as of today in our sergeant. Thirty-eight and a half years on the force. He's seen a lot of changes and, and he's been part of those changes. And we really thank him on behalf of the entire Board of Selectmen for his service to our town. We're better because of him. As mentioned, the beaches are open. We've been busy every day. We are selling non-resident passes at each of our beaches. About 10 to 20% of our capacity is non-resident, but we're busy. State park has been sold out almost every day and people are finding our beaches. But I think, I think the message is getting out there that the state parks are really, you know, very tough to get into. And I'm seeing less and less lines of people getting in. I've been made aware that if they're letting 500 cars in, and they have been, I think that's the number, about 500. Well, now the camping is allowed. They're going to take that 500 and make it 300. Because 200 people are going to be in camp, in the campground. This is at Rocky Neck, of course, our local state park. So that's going to be that many less people that can come in on day trips, enjoy the beach. That many more people that'll be turned back and turned around and looking for space. We have had great difficulties. I, my heart goes out to Giant's Neck Heights, people and residents and the beaches there. People are desperate and scrambling to get to Rocky Neck and they walk in and they walk through the private beach there. And really, there's a lot of confrontation. There's a lot of issues. There's a lot of people parking on the residential streets up in, up in Giant's Neck illegally, just parking on someone's front lawn and, and, you know, half in the street and half on a lawn and, and all that other stuff. And, and, you know, our police are doing the best they can, but they're scrambling. So solutions in the future, like maybe residential parking stickers, that if you live in Giant's Neck Heights, you know, cities do that, you know. And I'll tell you what, and I got this from the DEEP. Many, many of the towns with state beaches have this. So, you know, you can park in the street only if you're a resident. And that really gives the police more ammunition. It gives them the ability to enforce the parking zones. Because if you put no parking throughout Giant's Neck, you're only really going to be hurting the residents up there because they use the streets to park of the small housing lots. Anyway, to move on, I'm trying to gauge when we might be able to meet in public. And the, the issue is us meeting and then hybriding the public viewing of our meetings via Zoom. And I think we can try that in August for maybe our August meeting. And then maybe as September, October rolls around, we'll just get back to normal. And hopefully the restrictions of people in a room, right now, I think it's 25 people. So if 26 people, including us, by the way, and we're six plus Sandy, so that, you know, seven or less people. You know, if, if 26 people were to show up to a meeting, there would be that great difficulty of either canceling the meeting or sending someone out and saying they couldn't be in our meeting. We don't want that to happen. So we're working on that. Maybe in August, we can do a hybrid. I have Carmen in IT working on that. We'll set up some of these computers where we can, you know, try to capture most of us on a screen and have the public listen in and also be able to participate during public comment and delegations. Farm Day is coming up. I think it's on the same day. Does someone know about Farm Day? They're still doing it, I think. And it's going to be this, I think, the Samuel Smith House. I got some details and then I didn't get details or an invite yet. But I think it's the same day as Celebrating Slime would have been. And if I pull up a calendar real quick, that would have been on the 18th. Oh, they're not, so probably the 19th is Farm Day, because they usually have it the day after. Be watching for that. You'll see notifications on that. You'll see some Facebook ads and advertisement for that. Our Agricultural Committee puts on a great day there as well. Mrs. Hardy and I, last week, attended a memorial service out at Bridebrook for, for the 33, 30 or 33 folks that, that passed away during this COVID pandemic out at Bridebrook. And it was a wonderful service. It was outdoors in the parking lot. Family of the, of the victims were in attendance and they did a fantastic job giving a dignified, proper service. You know, that, that building went through a lot and those, those residents and those healthcare workers went through a lot when, when it was ravaging. If that's the word, through their building. And, you know, what I, what I walked away with is that, that those, those healthcare workers just hard on their sleeve. They, they, they care. They love their patients. And, and they were devastated by what has happened to their, their place out there. So a very, very touching, moving thing on a, on a very warm afternoon. And Roseanne and I baked in the sun for an hour, hour and a half or so. Drinking with water. Is there anything else to add, anybody? Any questions about what's going on in town?
Oh, I.
Go ahead. I'll wait.
Do you know when the town hall will be open to the public?
Yeah, we're going to have a soft opening. I mean, we're not going to advertise it, but is this an advertisement? I don't know.
Public comment question.
Dan, Monday, Monday, we're going to try. And you know what? We're going to roll it right back if it doesn't work. But again, we had the sneeze shields up. We have stickers on the floor, six, six space, six feet apart in spacing. And I think, well, some people I think are respectful and they understand. But yes, Monday, we expect to be able to have the doors unlocked and our personnel will be ready for it. Right, Sandy? We're trying hard to be ready for it. I'm, I'm nervous as can be. And I'll, I'll say that frankly. I mean, it just, it's going to take one. It's going to take one. And we don't want our family at town hall, our team, our family, to, to catch it, bring it back to theirs. But it also means we'd have to shut down town hall and probably start working remotely again. And really, getting it now would just send us back three months. I'm worried at my job, at, at my business. It's, but I'm worried at town hall. And I'm also, you know, you know, the, the police station that we're currently in, the temporary quarters, it was brought up to this, to me today, that they have great difficulty having workstations six feet apart. I mean, you have 25 people that work in that building and they're on top of one another as it is. And now, you know, proper distancing in workspaces are supposed to be six feet apart. And, you know, they never had enough room to begin with and very concerned about that. Again, you have COVID go catch, one person brings that into the building and you have a whole police force that's out of work. And, and never mind devastation and health and with, you know, them bringing it back to their families. And they meet a lot of people because that's a people's job. They're out there, you know. job. They're out there, you know, all, all day long, engaging with the public. So very, very concerned and, and we can't let our guard down. So they're, they're wearing their face masks and they're doing everything they can. But I'm, as we open up town hall, I'm, I'm just very, very, we're doing it very cautiously and we're going to watch everything that happens. And if we need to roll it back suddenly, I know there'll be a whole lot of disappointed people tugging at the door. We are asking people to pay their taxes online with a credit card or mail it in. Generally, it's, it's a right of, taxpayers like to come in and pay their taxes in person. It's like the one time a year that many of them even come into the town hall. And we love to see them. I, I enjoy engaging, but this isn't the year for that. And I, I, it's, I'm desperately trying to keep our staff safe. And, and, and you can help us, the public, by putting a 55 cent stamp on that and sending it out. We do have a drop box in the front of the building. So coming up the stairs in the front of the building, the faces, Pennsylvania Avenue, off the door that faces the parking lot, there is a chained down drop box that people can slip their tax payment into. And wow, what did I say, Kevin?
Nothing.
So, so, so drop off your payment if you wish, but please, if, if you don't need to come into the building, please don't right now. We're, again, we want to be safe. Any other questions? Good one, Dan. Any other questions about the town, how things are going? What am I missing?
We, we generally only have one meeting in July. I'm wondering if people feel the necessity to schedule a second meeting considering the circumstances that we're operating under?
We are going to need a meeting to, to schedule the referendum properly, have a town meeting that adjourns to a referendum. I, I have to let the Board of Finance do their work first and assuming it comes out of Board of Finance with an approval to go to referendum. We would need to meet rather quickly to stay on schedule and move it to a referendum, you know, have a meeting. I, I think, and there's, there's, there's opposing views on this, whether we have to have a town meeting. We have to have a town meeting anyway for some of these things. So I think we will meet on the third Wednesday of July.
All right.
But we might need a special meeting prior to that just to schedule the referendum so we can have two weeks to print ballots and prepare the poll workers. So yes, we'll probably meet at least once, if not twice.
Okay. All right. So we should go ahead and plan on the third Wednesday?
I think we should for the town meeting part, yeah, for the, for the appropriations. And, and maybe if they do their business next Wednesday, they're, they're meeting a week from tonight, the Board of Finance, if they get that, that work done, maybe we have a special meeting on Thursday, the following Monday, just to schedule the referendum. Okay?
Okay. Right. And I assume that you have graciously given all of our town employees the Friday, this Friday off to celebrate the 4th of July?
The, this Friday is off. It's a state and federal holiday observance in the 4th of July. So the town hall will be closed this Friday. Is that your question? You cut out a little bit.
I was saying, I'm congratulating you on your graciousness and giving our employees time off to celebrate the holiday.
Well, it's, it's not graciousness as much as I got to follow the contract. And when it falls on a Saturday, I got to give them Friday. When it falls on Sunday, I think we give them Monday. And then that's, that's the great American way. Some businesses are open, but, but, but you will probably find all state and municipal offices closed on the 3rd of July. And I do wish everybody is safe and enjoyable as much as, but we, we owe it to ourselves to be happy and enjoy this, this holiday, this three-day weekend. So go out and enjoy it, yeah.
Well, happy birthday. Happy 4th of July, everybody.
And happy new year.
To you, yeah.
Are there any other points of interest, any questions under the first selectmen's report? I think if there's anything I need to inform you on, I think we've covered it all. Okay, so we could, we can go to public comment. Anybody wish to speak this evening? The Board of Selectmen. Anyone? 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 Okay.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Kevin Serry.
And Mr. Salerno seconds it. I wish you all, again, a safe and happy and the same three-day weekend. And we'll see you, see you next week. Bye now.
Thanks, sir.
Care, everybody.
Take care.
Good night.